Board of Education, regular board meeting. Today is September the 6th. It is now 5:17 PM and I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Mr. Margot if he would lead us in the flag salute.
Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in its true republic, for which it stands, one nation, united in the vision of liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. And student board member Alex Bowden, will you please read the mission and vision statement, please?
Our mission: Educational Excellence. Our vision: Our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Bowden. Next, we have report of closed session. Dr. Braggy?
Thank you, President Wells. In closed session, the Board of Education voted 5 to 0 in favor of settlement for case OAH 2022 020444.
Thank you. One second. Next, we have our BHUSD Community Spotlight. And this month, starting September 15th through October 15th, is Hispanic Heritage Month. And we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month to recognize the achievements and contributions of Hispanic American champions who have inspired others to achieve success. And on that note, we have some speakers with us this evening from our community. We have parents, Marta Ramirez, Leila Perlutter, and a new parent, Angelina Castro, who are going to speak to us this evening. And then, following them, we have our very own Assistant Superintendent Rafael Guzman. So first, I'd like to invite up Marta, Leila, and Angelina.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Marta Ramirez. Oh, I'm sorry, I think I... Okay, buenas noches, it's okay, okay. My name is Marta Ramirez and I'm here today with my husband Renee and my two daughters, Manuela and Natalia. We have been living here in Los Angeles for 22 years. And we have been part of the district for 13 years, when Manuela started kindergarten. And Manuela just graduated from the high school and is going in a couple of weeks to UCLA. And Natalia just started 9th grade here at Beverly High. And, well, here also with me, I have... It's Spanish month, but, but, but we're all Colombians. It's just, I don't know why, but we are. So it's my friend Loli and my friend Angelina, they're both from Colombia and they're gonna talk shortly about their families too, in a moment. When Mary asked me to... Oh, okay, well, I always have been trying to be involved in the schools. I was PTA president at Beverly Vista for two years, volunteering the classroom whenever I can. And, well, about the Hispanic heritage, when Mary asked me to talk about the Hispanic heritage, I asked myself, what is it that makes us like this group of, that is Hispanic or Latino, besides of our, of course, speaking Spanish, no? So I looked into some facts. And first, 60 million of Americans identify themselves as Latinos, which is 18% of the US population, which is a lot. So Spanish is the foreign language most taught in the schools here in the US. So that's part of our Spanish background and our Spanish heritage. And also, but also, besides from the Spanish, what I think identified as Latinos, and I always think about this, is like this passion that we have. When you think about a Latino, it's like the passion that we have for life and for food and for dancing and for, and for family, family as the center of our values. And when we talk family, it's not only family like parents and siblings, or, no, not only parents and kids, but we have, our family is like the cousins, the primos, no, and the primas, and the oldest extended family, cousins in 1st grade, 2nd grade, 3rd grade, no? So my daughters always tell me, "Why do you have so many cousins, Mom?" And it's because, and it's because we have so cousins in 3rd grade, 4th grade, and they're all family. And we all embrace it as family. So that's part of our culture, that's part of we is. And what made me proud with Manuela and Natalia, when they embraced this culture and when they listened to Shakira and they listened to J Balvin, which are Colombians too, and when they see Modern Family and they see how Sofia Vergara speaks closely, similar to me, and they laugh about it. So that made me happy and, well, that's a little about our family and our culture. So gracias, gracias por invitarnos. Thank you for inviting us today.
Thank you.
Good evening. And I am here just to share my experience here in the district. I do have two children here. We started here at a very young age, in kindergarten. And my hope was that always, someday, we will have bilingual education or bilingual program or some kind of bilingual early intervention. So I think that the new language intervention that I see in progress in the district is taking Spanish in middle school. And the kids can take now in 6th grade, 7th and 8th grade, Spanish. And I think that's a great advantage that now the district is offering. So thank you for that. Hopefully, in the future, there is a little more language intervention in the early education. And I do see the advantage. My kids, one has started Spanish in 6th grade, and I speak Spanish at home to them, and we took them to Colombia, and they had connections between the class and the background. And I do see that it's important for the school to promote a little more part of the culture. And maybe talking in the classrooms or doing certain activities where the kids have more knowledge about the Hispanic Heritage Month. Most of the time, people think that the students are from Mexico, but there are so many different nationalities and many countries who speak Spanish. So that would be good to educate the culture here in Beverly Hills about the countries that speak Spanish and have some different activities and some kind of integration with the culture and the language and so many other books and literature and different things. So thank you for inviting us and good night.
Thank you.
I will. Hello. I am honored, Mary. Thank you for inviting us, for inviting me, representing my country and my roots, my transition to the US. Well, I'm here with my 10-year-old boy. He goes to Horseman. He just started school. I'm here as, because I have a job in the Colombian consulate. I work as a diplomat there. And so he just started school and it's, it has been, it's not been easy, but, well, he's, we have found a lot of nice people along the way and that helped me and him to adapt smoothly to his new life. One of the reasons I chose Beverly Hills was because of Mary. I, well, I didn't know where to live. My job is in Beverly Hills also, but I wanted my son to get a good education and I know he will. We have felt very welcome. The teachers have been very, very nice. He says, he said, I'm surprised that I met two Colombians here because he said that nobody spoke Spanish. There are no Latins at school, so, well, I was surprised. But, well, he's very, we already had some kids home, one French kid, we had a playdate. But, well, I'm very happy to see that there are more people. For now, I don't want him to speak Spanish because I need, well, for him to learn English well. He's done good. We, but, well, I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you could just wait and then I'll go around and give everybody an opportunity to speak. Alex?
Hi, thank you so much for coming and speaking. Thank you so much for sharing your experience in the district and especially, you said you're a diplomat here from Colombia, and that's actually a career that I hope to pursue. So it's very interesting for me to hear your experience coming here.
You're welcome to ask me anything you want.
Thank you so much. And also, at the high school here, we really stress like our language and culture clubs and I think it's, the students are already on the aspect of, you know, not just learning a language, but also experiencing the culture and trying to find new ways to learn about the world around us. So thank you for sharing your experience.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. I really enjoyed it and nice to hear that there's a recognition that it's not only just the south of the border people, that we have a lot of the other countries from South America also. I would like to share with you, you're much too young to know this, but when I first came to the school district many years ago, there was a program in the elementary school called FLESS, Foreign Language in the Elementary School. And every child in grade 1 through 5, at that time, because the middle school was attached, but 1 through 5, had either Spanish or French. They got to take a choice. And that, they matriculated up through that and then went into the middle school. And I don't know why that program was ever discontinued, but it was, but it was a marvelous program because not only did they learn to speak some Spanish, but they learned about the culture of the people in South America and in Mexico and some of the customs and holidays and so on. It was a wonderful program and someday, maybe, we can bring it back. I think it really would have done a great deal for the feeling of the community and the countries together. So thank you again for sharing your stories. I really enjoyed them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing new to add, just really...
It's Martha Ramirez and I'm here today with my husband Renee and my two daughters, Manuela and Natalia. We have been living here in Los Angeles for 22 years and we have been part of the district for 13 years when Manuela started kindergarten. And Manuela just graduated from the high school and is going in a couple of weeks to UCLA.
Congratulations.
Natalia just started ninth grade here at Beverly High. And well, here also with me, I have, it's a Spanish month, but, but, but we're all Colombians. It's just, I don't know why, but we are. So it's my friend Loli and my friend Angelina, they're both from Colombia and they're gonna talk shortly about their families too in a moment. When, when Mary asked me to, oh, okay, well, I always have been trying to be involved in the schools. I was a PTA president at Beverly Vista for two years and volunteering the classroom whenever I can. And well, about the Hispanic heritage, when Mary asked me to talk about the Hispanic heritage and I myself, what, what is it that makes us like this group of, that is Hispanic or Latino, besides of our, of course, speaking Spanish, no? So I look into some facts and first, 60 million of Americans identify themselves as Latinos, which is 18% of the US population, which is a lot. So Spanish is the foreign language most tough in the schools here in the US. So that's part of our Spanish background and our Spanish heritage. And also, but also, besides from the Spanish, what I think identified as Latinos, and I always think about this, is like this passion that we have. When you think about a Latino, it's like the passion that we have for life and for food and for dancing and for, and for family, family as the center of, of our values. And when, when we talk family, it's not only family like parents and siblings or, no, not only parents and kids, but we have, our family is like the cousins and the primos, no, and the primas and the oldest extended family of cousins in first grade, second grade, third grade, no, so my, my, my daughters always tell me, why do you have so many cousins, mom? And it's because, and it's because we have so cousins in third grade, fourth grade, and they're all family and we all embrace it as family. So that's part of our culture, that's part of who is, and what made me proud with Manuela and Natalia, when they embrace this culture and when they listen to Shakira and they listen to J Balvin, which are Colombians too, and when they see a modern family and they see how Sofia Vergara speaks closely, similar to me and, and they laugh about it. So, so that made me happy and well, that's a little about our family and our culture. So gracias, gracias por invitarnos. Thank you for inviting us today.
Thank you.
Much love.
Good evening and I am here just to share my experience here in the district. I do have two children here. We started here at very young age in kindergarten and my hope was that always someday we will have bilingual education or bilingual program or some kind of bilingual early intervention. So I think that the, the new language intervention that I see in progress in the district is taking Spanish in middle school. And the kids can take now in sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade Spanish. And I think that's a great advantage that now the district is offering. So thank you for that. Hopefully in the future, there is a little more language intervention in the early education. And I do see the advantage, my kids, one is started in Spanish in sixth grade and I speak Spanish at home to them and we took them to Colombia and they had connections between this, the class and the background. And I do see that it's important for the school to promote a little more part of the culture and maybe talking in the classrooms or doing certain activities where the kids have more knowledge about the Hispanic Heritage Month. Most of, most of the time, people think that the students are from Mexico, but there are so many different nationalities and many countries who speak Spanish. So that would be good to educate the culture here in Beverly Hills about the countries that speak Spanish and have some different activities and some kind of integration with the culture and the language and so many other books and literature and different things. So thank you for inviting us and good night.
Thank you.
I will, hello. I am honored, Mary. Thank you for inviting us, for inviting me, representing my country and my roots, my transition to the US. Well, I'm here with my 10-year-old boy. He goes to Horace Mann. He just started school. I'm here as, cause I have a job in the Colombian consulate. I work as a diplomat there. So he just started school and it's, it has been, it's not been easy, but, well, he's, we, we have found a lot of nice people along the way and that helped me and him to adapt to, smoothly to his new life. One of the reasons I chose Beverly Hills was because of Mary. I, well, I didn't know where to live. My job is in Beverly Hills also, but I wanted my son to get a, a good education and I, I know he will. We have felt very welcome. The teachers have been very, very nice. He says, he said, I'm surprised that I met two Colombians here because he said that nobody spoke Spanish. There's no, there are no Latins at school, so, well, I was surprised. But well, he's very, we had, we already had some kids home, one, one French kid, we, we had a play date, but well, I'm very happy to see that there are more people. For now, I don't want him to speak Spanish because I need, well, him, for him to learn English well. He, he's done good. We, well, but well, I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you could just wait and then I'll go around and give everybody an opportunity to speak. Alex?
Hi, thank you so much for coming and speaking. Thank you so much for sharing your experience in the district and especially, you said you're a diplomat here from Colombia and that's actually a career that I hope to pursue. So it's very interesting for me to hear your experience coming here.
You're welcome to ask me anything you want.
Thank you so much. And also at the high school here, we really stress like our language and culture clubs and I think it's, the students are already on the aspect of, you know, not just learning a language, but also experiencing the culture and trying to find new ways to learn about the world around us. So thank you for sharing your experience.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. I really enjoyed it and nice to hear that there's a recognition that it's not only just the south of the border people, that we have a lot of the other countries from South America also. I, I would like to share with you, you're much too young to know this, but when I first came to the school district many years ago, there was a program in the elementary school called FLESS, Foreign Language in the Elementary School. And every child in grade one through five, at that time, because the middle school was a tent, but one through five, had either Spanish or French. They got to take a choice. And that, they matriculated up through that and then went into the middle school. And I don't know why that program was ever discontinued, but it was, but it was a marvelous program because not only did they learn to speak some Spanish, but they learned about the culture of the people in South America and in Mexico and some of the customs and holidays and so on. It was a wonderful program and someday maybe we can bring it back. I think it really would have done a great deal for the feeling of the community and the, the countries together. So thank you again for sharing your stories. I really enjoyed them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing new to add, just really thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing your stories. I, I agree that it's wonderful to get perspectives. We, we do very often think about there, we have very large populations from certain countries and then not a lot from others and it all kind of gets blended together when you look at it from far away and it's important to have programming. And I think we do have some great programming where we do highlight the actual, the different nationalities and, and whatnot and the different cultures. And so just thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I actually grew up in New Mexico and I know that that young fellow, wave your hand, you also grew up in New Mexico, correct? Yeah, no, or you, your parents live there now. Oh, sorry, okay. But I'm not Hispanic, but I actually became fluent in Spanish. So yo voy a tratara hablarte en español y mucho gusto conocerles. I said, very nice to meet you and thanks for coming.
The words right out of my mouth. I was gonna say gracias por hablarte esta noche. I'm actually learning Italian right now. I did all my high school and college in Spanish, but I'm doing Italian on Duolingo and I just gotta say, you should constantly be learning a foreign language. It is such a wonderful thing to do for your brain and for your life and culture and whatever, just whatever language, just get into it because obviously the parallels between Italian and Spanish are a lot and it's bringing me back a lot of Spanish for me as well. But thank you for, for being here tonight.
Well, I just want to say thank you for being here. I'm so delighted to introduce you, Angelina, to Marta and for you to meet more people. I met Marta through one of my dear, dear friends and she was planning to, to move here with her son and she just moved here. And she was looking like where would she put him into school and she's, you know, a fish out of water, so to speak, but I, you can see already, she's gonna just be such a wonderful addition to our school community. And I'm so happy for you to connect with Marta and for Leila, I think, or Lele, I'm really excited for the three of you to represent. We had for our Immigrant Heritage Month, Sharon Przowski spoke and she actually wrote in a letter and she spoke about Mexico and her family heritage from Mexico. And it just thought it was really nice to have all three of you from Colombia to speak tonight, to represent. And I encourage everybody to spend some time and look at what's going on in the city because to your point, we have such a huge Hispanic community and all over the city and in Beverly Hills itself, there's so many cultural events and activities celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. And I know that even at the Wallace, they have a really beautiful ballet that's going to be performing in early October. So I just encourage everybody to look into that and I think it just shows that we have so, we have such a rich population in our community of, in diversity and I think it's, we just need to highlight where everybody is sometimes. So I really appreciate you sharing your story. We also have Rafael Guzman, who's gonna come and speak tonight. And Rafael is our new Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and I think is a great representative from his family heritage from Guatemala. And again, we have another wonderful perspective to hear. Thank you, Rafael.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells, and it's a pleasure to speak to the board today, our superintendent, our cabinet and the community. It's definitely an honor and a privilege to be able to speak today for Hispanic Heritage Month and, well, I, so, you know, as far as myself, I, I would like to say, I'm just so thankful for the opportunities that, that we have in this country as well as just, you know, the amazing things that we've contributed as well as a culture. You know, my parents, I actually, I was, I was born here, but both my parents are from Guatemala. They both came here, not in the most legal of ways. And, you know, thanks to President Reagan, you know, then they became legal. And after that, you know, we were able to just, you know, a lot of different things as we grew, as I grew up, you know, I grew up in a house where we didn't fully learn Spanish or English. So we were kind of like, as kids, we were caught in between, right? Learning two different languages at the same time. So that's always a, you know, something that's interesting. So one of the things that helped me tremendously was, you know, growing up in the church and, you know, I had one of those English-Spanish bibles. I don't know if you've ever seen one of those? And so, you know, I, I didn't understand something in English, I would go to the Spanish side. And when I didn't understand something in Spanish, I would go to the English side. It was, it was really weird, but I, I think that's how I kind of learned both of the languages, right? Just kind of like reading books and, and understanding that. But, you know, a, after that, you know, my family, I had the opportunity to go to the, after high school, to the Marine Corps and I served there four and a half years and it was definitely a rewarding opportunity. And then after that, you know, of course, I, I entered school districts. In fact, you know, I, it was really something that I think just was, I, I was very lucky. After I left the military, I had, I had a job offer and then I got a, an interview for another job and I'm like, well, do I go to the job offer or do I go to the interview? And the interview was at a school district. And I didn't know much about school districts. Luckily, when I went to that interview, I, I did well and I got the job there, but some of the people that I worked with were from the high school that I went to. And I actually grew up in the city of Compton, to, and, and I went to Dominguez High School in Compton. And so I, one of the, the members there, he, he was from, from that city and, and so from there I kept growing in school districts and eventually becoming a CBO and, and now I'm here today as the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services here at Beverly Hills Unified, which is a, you know, a great honor. I never thought that, you know, I would ever have the opportunity to, to be in a position like this, growing up. I never thought that that would ever happen, but thank God and, you know, it's just been a, a real honor and, and I'm thankful for all the opportunities, right? And, and that's something that I think, you know, I, I tell my kids is, you know, in this country, we have just so many great opportunities to do whatever it is we want to do. And I tell them, if you want to be an astronaut or a movie star or, or an accountant, a born accountant like me, you, you could do whatever you want to do. And so I'm just, you know, it's, it's an honor and, and, you know, I, I just really enjoy just the, the amazing things that, that happen in this country. So, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna give everyone an opportunity. Alex, did you have anything to add?
Just thank you so much, Mr. Guzman, for sharing your story. It was incredible. Thank you.
I'm glad you made the right decision and go for the interview. Glad to have you here, Rafael. Thank you for sharing your story.
Really happy to have you here, Rafael. Thank you for sharing your story. I'm also, you know, first, I'm a generation American. I think my parents are here legally, but, you know, it, it's, this, this country, I agree, has afforded us all a lot of opportunities to choose our way and I'm glad that, you know, your journey has led you here with us. It's gonna be great. It's already been great working with you and I know it's gonna be, thank you.
Nothing further to add, but I enjoyed hearing about your background. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. You're hired.
Thank you, Rafael. I just, I appreciate you getting up and speaking. I know it's like, this evening, we have speakers that are, are new to our community, Angelina and, and Rafael, and I just appreciate your courage to come up and share with everybody. It just enriches our lives and I, I appreciate that. I know that's not easy to do when you're, you're new to, to the whole school community. So thank you for doing that and sharing with all of us. It's really appreciated. I also just wanted to say thank you to Renee and Manuela, Manuela and Natalia for, for coming here tonight and participating as well. It's really lovely to have your family here. So thank you, Marta. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar, but we have a, we have a public comment prior, so I'm going to call Nathan Kruger for, it's for item nine K and M.
Good evening, school board. Just for the record, how many minutes do I get? Is there a limit or?
Three minutes.
Three, all right. I'll try. So I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of item nine K through M, which is the asphalt project at Beverly Vista Hawthorne and I guess Beverly Vista. So in short, one of the challenges we've had, it's really hot at Beverly Vista and I will say, I'm here to really encourage the school board to take more active measures to mitigate the intense heat and UV out on the blacktop at BV. I will say it is, as most of you know, the south part of Beverly Vista is, it's basically all blacktop or asphalt, except for that small part, which is the green field, but there is very little, almost no natural shade in that area. So it is what the EPA would call an urban heat island. And that means that you have drastic increases in temperature because there's just no, nothing moist to bring the temperatures down. And so I actually went over to BV today. So the high, if you go to your weather app, the high was 92 degrees. I went to BV, I had my thermometer, it was 107. So it was a 15 degrees hotter and there were children out there. They, they had the opportunity to go inside and watch a movie, which is great at the auditorium, but kids were playing basketball, they're gushing sweat, they're having fun, but they're really bright red and gushing sweat. So my daughter Evelyn, she talks about her friend who goes into her history class after lunch, we'll just call him Michael for anonymous name, and she says that every day he's beet red, gushing sweat, and she says in her words, I think he's dead. So this is every day after lunch. These kids are like that rolling into history class. So you gotta wonder, how does that impact Michael's academic performance? So I researched it a little bit. And so there was a study that came out in 2018 by a group of Harvard professors. And so I'll just read you a little bit. We provide the first evidence that cumulative heat exposure inhibits cognitive skill development. So they actually studied 10 million PSE, PSAT tests and the conclusion was for each one degree Fahrenheit increase in temperature, it reduced the amount learned that year by 1%. So it's a direct or inverse correlation. So that would mean, just from a layman's perspective, if you have a 15 degree increase in temperature at Beverly Vista Blacktop, you've got a 15% reduction in the amount learned that year at BV. So this is a major problem. Outside of that, there's the obvious impact of heat stroke, dehydration, but for me personally, the UV exposure is really the biggest issue. My, I had come from a family from Scotland and Norway and with fair skin like mine, my mother passed away when I was 16 from melanoma skin cancer. And now I'm sending my kids to a school where they're getting, just they're swimming in UV out during recess and lunchtime. My daughter Evelyn, she comes home with like sunburns under her eyes every day. And so there's not a, a amount, and I'll just wrap up here, there's not much, there's no amount of sunblock or hats that I could put on her to protect her enough. So really, I just, I beg the school board, do not pursue another asphalt project, do not put more money into a blacktop. We need to rip that thing out and plant some trees. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So may I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
So I'm gonna move to approve the consent calendar minus items K, L, M and N.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five.
Did anybody second it?
No, I was gonna say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. So let's start with a motion for approval of agreement with, I'm actually gonna suggest that we combine items K, L and M. So I'll make a motion for approval of agreement with Garza Construction Inc. for Asphalt Project at Beverly Vista Middle School, Asphalt Repairs at Hawthorne School.
Actually, Mary, can we bifurcate Hawthorne out of there and just keep K and M together because they're BV? And then deal with Hawthorne separate, it's different projects, it looks like.
Sure. I mean, I think it's, it's the same work, but certainly.
Well, one says repairs, one says actually seal coats and.
Right. I mean, the backup, we can separate them, it's fine. So, well, I'm gonna make a motion for approval, for approval of agreement with Garza Construction Inc. for Asphalt Project at Beverly Vista Middle School and Repairs and Seal Coat at Beverly Vista Middle School.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right, so discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm totally confused.
I pulled some items to speak.
I had a question on that one. Why were they not listed together, the approval for the asphalt project and the repairs all at the same time?
Yes, Mrs. Marcus, thank you for that question. So these projects are all part of the deferred maintenance plan that the district had already approved previously. We weren't sure at, at the time when we were going out for quotes for these projects, if we were gonna be able to do all of these during the summer, but we could say, you know, we're happy, we were able to actually accomplish those projects. So they were just separated because we weren't, if, if we weren't able to do one, we at least took care, if we weren't able to do both, we at least took care of one of the projects. So that's the reason why they were separated out and, and they were kind of addressing different needs as well. So that's, that's the reason why those were two separate projects.
It was, it was, it was the same contractor that did the work though for both of them, right?
Correct, yes.
And the work has already been completed?
Yes, the work, yes, the work was completed.
Do we think that maybe we would have gotten a better price if we had done it as one bid rather than two separate ones?
Perhaps. I think that during the decisions were, were being made at that time, there wasn't a surety that we were gonna be able to do both of those. This, this happened earlier in the summer and that's pretty much the reason why that they, that we separated those out. But I think in the future, what we're going to make sure to do is, you know, plan this out a little earlier on so that we can make sure that we just combine these as best as possible and to your point, get the best rate possible.
Great, thanks. Good.
My understanding was that the nine K item was not started yet, that this is a new project and, I mean, we're approving it to go forward or it's on the agenda for approval. Has it actually happened?
Yes, yes, all these projects have already been completed.
So then why are we approving now like $57,000 for an asphalt?
So I think there was, unfortunately, there, so these were approved previously in the deferred maintenance plan, but they, now they're being brought, typically you would bring them before at, at, you know, at the right time. Unfortunately, I think there was some confusion early in the summer in regards to bringing them to you all, but I think that's why we're bringing them as ratifications here, getting these approved, because they, they are completed and now we just have to make sure we pay the vendor. But I think, again, this is something that we've written down for the future. I think because there was approval for it, they thought, oh, we're okay, but I clarified to them, no, we, we got to make sure that before we actually start the project that everything's approved at the board level.
Well, of course, it's difficult to talk about something that's quite literally in cement right now, but I think that there is definitely reason to think about the lack of green space and shade at Beverly Vista Middle School and other schools, but BVMS really seems to be hidden, hit, very much so. And it would be a sad state of affairs for kids to just have to go to the auditorium for lunch when they really should be moving around. Someone from the community who has a science background at BVMS did send me an article that says apparently asphalt can heat up to 145 degrees. So it really, you know, times have changed, the climate is clearly getting hotter and I'm just saying, it's worth discussing whenever moving forward in terms of asphalt in Southern California to, to, to find other options. And I just want to point that out.
Sure, and, and most definitely, you're absolutely right. I think that there are several things that we could do and in fact, Ken and I have been working on some ideas that we could present at a later time regarding this and, and we heard our community member here as well, I think it's a very valid point. And so there are several different things that can be done. We just have to make sure we go through the proper processes because a lot of this will involve just different agencies that we have to make sure we get certifications from and approvals, but I do think there's definitely steps that we could bring and I could, you know, at a later time.
Great. Noah, did you have anything?
Well, I was just gonna say, Mandy, we, we have looked in the past at the cloth sales over the basketball courts. I know that was a discussion that, that they had at BV, I think this was before reconfiguration, but it still brings up DSA issues when you, any, anything like that goes through the DSA. So it's, it gets more complicated than just providing shade. We should look at possibilities and I guess the board would want to give direction about having staff look into possibilities of green space to provide shade on the blacktop area. Obviously, you can't put it on the field because you can't obstruct the fields, but you know, we can maybe take a, take a look at that and, and I don't, I don't know if it warrants necessarily consultants at this point, but perhaps Ken and his department can take a hard look at that situation and see if we can come up with viable solutions to bring back to us.
Yeah, it's definitely something that we've been looking at, you know, we, we're bringing more programs as well. So, you know, when Mr. Kruger brings up the points about how hot that asphalt is, we're bringing now middle school sports to BVMS, which is even, again, more traffic, you know, on our sites. We have begun a conversation with the PTA at Horace Mann. We have begun a conversation with the PTA at Horace Mann, and we're doing some good work there. And so we just need to continue those types of conversations because it's been a true partnership to, you know, look at what needs to be done, how it can be done in a, you know, in an economical way, but in a way that is also going to increase the shade for students.
Right, I would, I'd like to really actually call out the Horace Mann PTA and Dr. Bregi and working with Ken and you Raphael to address the shade issue there. I think that they've been great role models in terms of working with the issues with DSA and how to actually problem solve. And we as a cabinet, I mean, as a board, earlier in our study session, also spoke briefly about the possibility of forming a sustainability advisory group where we can address this issue with greening the campuses and the shade issue and amongst many other issues. And forming what that, starting that conversation of what could that advisory committee look at? Where we could really identify what the initiatives would be and prioritizing and how we would, how we would go about it. But I think we all recognize that this is an important issue, especially as we're looking at finishing our construction and the programs that we already have in place, like at this point, it's a great time to look at that as well. As, and including looking at our schools now, because we all see it as an important issue.
It's like a reverse Johnny Mitchell, right? pave paradise, put up a parking lot.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I mean, there's a lot of innovation out there now, and I think that there's grants and there's, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot out there that we just need to focus and, and put our resources behind that. And we have a lot, the city also wants to partner with us on this. They've, they've formed a sustainability committee from their commissions, and they would like to partner with the school district as well. So I think that we have a lot of opportunity there.
I just wanted to add one more thing, getting back to just the asphalt, is that if we just put a sale over it, then you're still missing the larger point, which is that when you have moisture and soil and plants and things at the bottom, then the heat isn't just sort of trapped at the upper layer of the sale. And I'm no scientist, but that was sort of explained to me. So.
Right, we need trees.
Right, we need trees and we need like loose soil and, and far less asphalt.
Yes, and trees need water. And how's that been going for us lately?
Well, they, they can be actually.
We have native plants.
For water conservation.
I will volunteer to do that.
Yeah.
Succulents would be great.
We have our urban tree, urban forester with the city who's an expert in trees and can make great recommendations for water conservation. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there and I'm excited about it, actually. Great. If nobody has any other comments, then I will call for the vote. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. And then separately, approval, I may have a motion for approval of agreement with Garza Construction for Asphalt Repairs at Hawthorne School.
I will make a motion for the approval of the agreement with Garza Construction for the Asphalt Repairs at Hawthorne.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Alex, did you have a, okay, all those in favor?
Someone did pull it though. Why did they pull that? Was that in conjunction with?
I wanted to pull it in.
All together as well.
Yeah, in conjunction, the same issues.
I approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I approve it, but just with some reservations because, I mean, it's been done, so it needs to be yet to be forward.
But it's just unfortunate that it got done and we clearly have a need in terms of this sizzling temperature.
Right. There's your alarm.
Heat warning alert.
Is that a heat advisory?
Yeah, yeah.
Way to put an exclamation point on that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. And in fairness to Raphael, I mean, he came at the end of July, so this work was already done and in place. And I would also say, you know, I think that we are all, we've restructured and we're making a lot of changes and really positive changes. And I think that that will allow us to catch some of these things or maybe plan further ahead. But at the same time, I don't want to belittle the work that Ken Haas and his group did to get school ready for the fall. And I know that they worked really hard so that they would be able to open. So I think we can do better in some ways, but at the same time, I appreciate their hard work as well. Thank you.
I will move for the revised amendment of number one of the agreement with Waldron and Associates.
I'll second.
I originally asked about this question because we, the one that we had the, we actually pulled at the time before because of the $13,000 increase. And since that time, we've got an explanation that they provided a district discount to the district and so on. But I still don't understand, and I'd like to see what exactly those amounts were for, that amount of money. What, what caused them to charge us more money, even though they've agreed to, to cut back some of it? I'd like to know, I'd like to see the backup board. Give me a bill, an invoice.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Marcus, I appreciate that. So just to give kind of a little bit of context, what we did after our last board meeting, we contacted our Mr. Waldron and Waldron and Associates, and we explained the situation. And I basically asked them, I said, I'd like to just find out like exactly what happened, as well as if there's any way we could get a credit for some of those services. They were actually, they actually did give us a credit, which I'm very happy and appreciative of the board because else who probably wouldn't have gotten that credit? So they, to their credit, they gave us a credit for, so this amount that we're asking for is about half of what we asked for at our previous meeting. So that, that was a good thing. But what, in, in their explanation was that they actually had provided a range from about $100,000 to $125,000. And so what ended up happening was we went pretty much right in the middle. And then essentially we, it was exceeded at that point when we combined the invoices. And what happened too was that they weren't billing us like on a monthly basis. They, they billed us a couple of months at a time. And so there was really no way that we could have tracked that we were going to be over, which, you know, and this is good for us, you know, as Ms. Wells pointed out, we're, we're developing systems. And one of the things we're going to make sure to do is always have this like a monthly tracker on these things. But they tracked over multiple, or they billed over multiple periods of time. So it was a couple of months. And then you also have to, one thing that happened, the trial went a little bit longer than expected because one, it went about a week longer because of a council's illness. So they had to prepare and appear. And so this created even more time to that estimate than originally that they had. So in the, so I did send over to both of the invoices and also a letter from the attorney, or, or, not the attorney, I'm sorry, from, from Mr. Waldron explaining this that I just, you know, mentioned. He's explaining all that in that email. So it's there for you to review if you'd like to see that.
Well, I appreciate everything that you've done, and I think you did a great job. And, and I love the fact that you finally asked one of our firms for a discount because that's something we never do. And, and I know that I did that when I was reading law, the legal bills sometimes. But I, I still say that even though it was over the amount, there's, when I read legal bills, it was .25 times here, .25 hours here, and so on. And, and that's what I guess I would like to be able to see if they're going to go over and, and charge us more money. And, and that, and I, I'm not asking for it now, I just felt that that was what I was concerned about. And I thank you again for getting that reduction and good luck.
Thank you.
I'm glad you pulled the item to Mrs. Marcus, thank you. Because I did want to highlight, like we discussed last time, a do not exceed is different than an estimate. And when we, and when I read the explanation from Waldron in the board materials, he said that Mr. Wade, I guess, chose 110,000 as an estimate, which is different than a do not exceed that we had in the contract. So I'm, I'm less concerned about the few thousand dollars this way or that way today, and just more concerned with setting a precedent going forward with our vendors that when we negotiate for a do not exceed, that means do not exceed unless you get prior written approval from us. Because that's not what happened here. Having a litigation background, I can appreciate the fact that when you bring an expert and then the date of the trial gets pushed and they have to be there and re-prepare, that could get very expensive. So like I said at the last board meeting, I don't doubt that the time was spent. I don't think there was anything like nefarious here. But I'm more making the point of setting a precedent with how our dollars get spent, right? Because this is dollars that otherwise could go somewhere that could be, you know, very valuable for instruction purposes. So just in terms of precedent setting, I hope that when we negotiated do not exceed, we, we sort of stick to that. Unless the vendor comes back to us and, you know, there's, there's a reason that we can all nod our heads and it doesn't just come in front of us in front of the board like this.
Point well taken. I appreciate that. We definitely, I think we learned from this experience, for one, you know, to honor that not to exceed amounts, to get those monthly billings and to always ask for a discount whenever we can. You know, that's, that's really important and appreciate that. So we'll make sure to have those things in place so that, again, this doesn't recur. And if, and if we see that it's getting close, we will make sure to come back to the board if there is a, you know, a justifiable reason to, to increase that not to exceed.
Can I just make one more comment? I was going to just add, if you don't ask, you don't get.
True.
Thank you for asking.
Mandy and Noah, did you have any comment? I just have one clarification. I thought, when I looked, I didn't see the invoice, I saw the two amendment, the original, the original not to exceed in the amendment, so maybe I missed it.
It's the last line on the, if you look on the document, it should be the last line, but I could, I could forward those two.
Just wanted to clarify that I, I did miss it, so thank you. I am going to, if there's no other questions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes four two zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Thank you, Raphael. Okay, next up is superintendent reports.
Yes, good evening. It was just two weeks ago tonight that we unveiled our new community pledge. And it was a really exciting event. We had over 100 people, between 100 and 150 people show up to our meeting out on the plaza there, the courtyard. And it was just, it's just such a unique opportunity to have so many influential leaders in our community come and also sign the pledge. But this is where it started. And then, as you know, we moved inside and the Board of Education has formally voted on our community pledge. And it was just the next day that we began our back to school nights at each of our schools. And so here's a collage of pictures at, at each of our schools. And, and our principals really stepped up in our administration and our teachers and staff who are all encouraging each other to be part of our community pledge. You can see that at the lower corner, left-hand side, it's a pretty big step and repeat that has the community pledge on it. We now have a permanent home for five of our community pledges. So the idea is to ensure that we keep this message going, and it takes everyone to do that. And so we're going to be really creative about how we do that throughout the school year and can continue to get people to not only sign the pledge, but even more importantly, live the pledge and live up to the pledge, follow the pledge. So, and then in the last picture, it was just a quick visit to our ILC so that even our kids that are part of the ILC that come through our district office are aware of our pledge. And that's really the next step for us as we continue and move forward is to find those opportunities to share the pledge. This is a, just a slide of a, a monthly meeting that I have the opportunity of attending. And Mrs. Wells joined this meeting as well for the PTA president's meeting. This is one of my favorite meetings where we're able to get all of our schools and all of our PTA presidents and co-presidents in one room and have a conversation about what's happening at each of our schools. It's a really strong team of volunteers and just a really great meeting to walk away from with some really influential people in the room and all sharing the success stories as it relates to PTA and how we can support them in these meetings. Football season has begun, and despite the winning score at the end, it was, it was a huge area of success for us to see so many of our community members come out. So Mr. Ellis and Mr. Mead and our high school administration, just thank you for, you know, intercepting, just being part of the receiving team for our community because everybody was welcomed. It was an overwhelming turnout at our game. We had new merch there for BHHS, and so that was exciting to be able to see people buying some new merch for this school year. And it was also an opportunity, as we get creative about the community pledge, that we actually had the pledge read. So co-principal DeCoutrelle read the pledge, you know, before the game started. And I think that that was really an important way to be able to share with another, another school district how important we feel these words are in our own community. And so I think that that was, there was a lot of value added to being able to start a football game with the pledge being read. We've been doing a lot of planning. So if you've been checking out our, our meeting schedules and our study sessions, you know, we're going to be sharing with you very soon a very important document that shows accountability, it shows clarity to the work that we're doing in our classrooms, the goals that we have in seven different pillar areas. And really appreciative, I've said it before, I'm going to say it again tonight, it's, it's not often that you have this opportunity where the board and the cabinet can collaborate about the most important thing, and that is the instruction that's happening in our school district. And, you know, we've had multiple conversations through study sessions about this document, the goals, the data, the accountability. And unless you have a roadmap, you're never going to find your way where you need to go. And so, you know, we have had a strategic plan in the past, which was really good work. I like to refer to this as kind of strategic plan 2.0 because it's that much better, it's that much more informative. It's really truly a roadmap on how to improve in our school district. And I'm really excited to be able to, in a very short amount of time, be able to present that to you. But I want to just reiterate again, it's not often, usually you have a cabinet and a team of people. But this is a, a full-on effort from our Board of Education to work alongside us. And as I've mentioned before, it doesn't happen often, and we've had some really important conversations. And I think that the learning that happens when you have these types of, of conversations about the most important thing that we do, I've seen just significant growth in this plan. And I'm excited to be able to unveil that and then to have checks and balances along the way so that, that everyone is looking at educational excellence in our school district. And then finally, I have the opportunity for the first time in many, many years, six to be exact, to, to get out into our schools. And as, as the foundation of educational excellence, it's my job as kind of the head teacher to be in our schools and to get to know our staff, get to know curriculum, be in classrooms. And there is an opportunity, after speaking with the board and, and having a conversation about my role as superintendent, it is certainly to be more active in our schools during the day, not just events after school, which are still amazing and wonderful, and you'll see me there. But I'm going to be looking at the, the following items here, as you can see, and, and really reach out to staff as I prioritize the time that I'm spending in schools. You know, whether it is just classroom instruction, just observations, whether it's, you know, spending time with a group of people that would like to share some of their good work in a spotlight. You know, shadowing and getting to know what types of supports people need, whether it's instructional or whether it's from our classified employees. And that's just an important part of my job that I've not. Um, and that's just an important part of my job that I've not had the, the, the time to do in the past. And I'm really excited about this opportunity, so I'm gonna be sending out, um, and getting some feedback from staff. I'm gonna be doing all of these things right here, um, but I'm going to prioritize my schedule, uh, based on, uh, hearing from the staff. Um, and as a, a teacher myself, um, uh, even co-teaching a lesson, uh, there's really nothing that's kind of off limits. I think the most important thing, uh, is to be in our classrooms. We have a new strategic plan and, uh, you can't hold others accountable unless you hold yourself accountable as a superintendent. Uh, and so, um, I finally have the opportunity to do this and I'm just really excited that the Board of Education has really listened, um, uh, authentically and has helped me get to a point where I can include this important work into my daily schedules. So I wanna thank the board for that. And that is my report.
Terrific. Alex?
Thank you for your report, Dr. Breggy, and I just wanted to say that, um, I admire the creativeness in getting the community pledge, like, out there and, you know, around the district, having like students from all the schools sign it and then also having it set at the football game. Um, and then about the football game, um, I do have a video, so I can show everyone.
Awesome.
Um, and then also I just wanted to stay from a student's perspective. Um, students, especially here at the high school, from what I can see, really admire and appreciate when you're here on campus because sometimes if you're here one day, I'll be like walking the halls and people will be like, guess who I saw? Guess who I took a picture with? Dr. Breggy. So I think students are really like, you know, get excited when they see you on campus, so.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I love hearing that. Well, thanks, Mrs. Marcus. Not everybody runs for me, Mrs. Marcus.
I love seeing you. Well, uh, first of all,
She's used to being the celebrity.
For the comprehensive report and I didn't, don't take that what I said just a second ago, it didn't mean that, that way. Um, I'd like to talk a little bit about the amount of time and work that the administration had been putting into the new strategic plan. I was on the original strategic plan, as you recall, and it was a good plan, but this one is better. And the reason it's better is because it really specifies how we're going to administer it and how we're going to assess it. And I don't think that was as prominent in the last strategic plan and it was a little bit more broad in scope. And now we're really zeroing in on specific areas and really putting down the metrics that we're gonna use on them. So I really am very, very pleased with this new plan. I have to tell you, uh, it's wonderful. And, and again, nothing is set in stone, so the fact that the first one was there doesn't mean that it can't be improved upon, which it was and which it is going to be at this time. And I have to tell you that in visiting the classrooms, teachers do welcome you there. I have to tell you that as a teacher in the school district, I always loved if an administrator was going to come and I would be happy to meet him and, and share how the teacher, and it, and it gives the, and you can look around the room to see what's happening in the classroom at that time also, which is, you know, you may walk in and see the teacher teaching, but you take a little peek around the room and you can see what's going on in the classroom and it gives you a pretty good visual of the progress that's being made in the classroom. So, I really wanna tell you that I think it's a great idea and I know that you've been trying to do it for the last couple of years and everything has been just so topsy-turvy that you couldn't. And now I know that you're gonna have time to do it and I think the teachers are going to like it. So, thank you for your report.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy, for your report. Um, first, I just got excited when I see, uh, football at night 'cause I remember the days and I remember Judy remembers this too, when we were on ASB and we were doing homecoming and other events at two o'clock or the two-thirty in the afternoon or something. And, um, so the last time I was on the board, we approved football lights twenty years ago, which was pretty cool. Um, second, uh, regarding the strategic plan, I, I won't repeat everything that, uh, Mrs. Marcus said, uh, but I, I will highlight back, uh, for the community that, uh, it really takes, uh, leadership, uh, from the superintendent and from the cabinet to welcome the kind of plan that, um, the board has been working with the cabinet for, which includes accountability, includes metrics, uh, more transparency, more, more detail. And, um, it, it really says something about, uh, Dr. Breggy and, um, his team, uh, how open they have been, uh, to the, the, the nudging that, uh, has been politely, uh, going on. And, uh, I look forward to continuing to working with you on that, albeit your office on Tuesday, give me a time. Uh, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really, really excited about how all that's coming along. So thank you for your leadership.
You bet.
I also want to mimic the sentiments of Gabe, which is that the cabinet and administration and you have done a fabulous job with the, um, the strategic plan and the amount of innovation and brain work that has gone into it over the summer is just incredible. And I can really tell that, uh, everyone listens very well and really, we all seem to be on the same page. And that's really, um, very rewarding to be a part of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. One, one of the things that this board has done a stellar job at is raising the bar for itself as well. Um, because as we're pushing this excellence in education, um, throughout our district, we realize that it has to start here. And although we have, like Rochelle said, we had a strategic plan a few years ago. We've had mission and vision rewrites a few years ago. Why are we doing it again? We're doing it again because, um, writing is rewriting, right? And because we recognize that we're not there yet and you need to pivot and you need to admit that. And you need to say, if what we have isn't working, we need to change the way we're doing things. And I think, I, I applaud the efforts of this board of recent to move the district in that direction and to take this seriously and say, we're gonna change, we're gonna do better 'cause we're gonna expect everybody to do better, all stakeholders. So thank you for, for keeping that going and hopefully we'll get this thing approved and, and actually put into, uh, um, reality.
Well, I, I agree. I think that, um, hopefully this will be on our next agenda, but, um, it's already in motion. And I think that the cabinet and yourself and your team and, and our board, I, I just think that the enthusiasm, um, coming from this entire team has been really fantastic. I, I really appreciate that we are not complacent, that we are, um, willing to continue to iterate and to learn and to, um, innovate, um, the programs that we have in place. I think that we've seen huge change already and we're gonna continue seeing it because that's the team we have, is that everybody is, um, on the same page on wanting to just continue to move, uh, forward, reach higher and achieve that educational excellence and I think it's really caught on. And I, I also feel like everywhere that, you know, going to back to school night, uh, going to the football game, uh, the PTA Presidents', uh, meeting, I think it's not just us talking, we're hearing this, um, throughout. And I think that's the biggest testament is that it's, it's reverberating out into the community and to our, our community leaders. And I think that that's very exciting for what this year has already started to bring. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to, uh, bringing the strategic plan onto the board. And I'm looking forward to you spending the time in the classroom and, um, and what that's going to, what that's going to bring for us as a school district. I'm, I'm really excited about that.
Thank you. And, um, most importantly about the strategic plan, what, what I really appreciate through all of our conversations is that it truly is a livable and breathable document. Um, because i- the extended version of the work includes all of our leadership teams, so our, our principals, our assistant principals, and, um, just the reassurance from the board that, you know, like as this continues, that this is this ongoing conversation so that our teachers are included and our IAs are included and that just, it, it touches every single person in our school district as far as what their job responsibility is. So, that, that continues that conversation going and you've allowed us to, um, incorporate that into the plan without being so rigid and regimented. So, um, thank you for that. I mean, it's gonna be an ongoing conversation at board meetings and updates, uh, as we go along. So thank you for, for allowing us to do that.
I also have to give a shout out to Mr. Mead because I've already heard from so many parents, um, they, they already feel a difference from you being in your role. And I, and in speaking to you, your enthusiasm and your passion for what you're doing, it, you can, you know, really feel it and it's really exciting, but, but it's already having an impact. And I think that's really incredible to see that happening so, so fast. And I'm hearing it not just from parents, but, um, you know, I'm hearing it at this, at the schools and also in the city. So I just, I wanna thank you. Alex? I can't wait to, for you to show your video. I think it is so amazing.
Thank you. Make sure I'm sharing my sound. Okay. Is it? Am I good? Maybe not. Okay, I'll share the sound when I play the video. Okay, so, um, the first thing I'm gonna start with is, um, campus activities here at the high school. Um, I'm actually planning to go to BV sometime next week, so I'll have an update on what they're up to, hopefully next time. Um, so the first thing is ASB activities. So, ASB really has kicked into full gear already. Um, we have so many lunchtime activities going on from, um, giving thank you notes. Like, students came and wrote thank you notes to teachers one day. We had an ice cream sandwich day. You can see some of my friends eating ice cream sandwiches. Um, we've had a bunch of pep rallies or one or two pep rallies, I think. Um, and then we have a lot of upcoming, um, events too. This Thursday is our club rush day, which is where all the clubs go on the third floor patio and, um, try and recruit new members, which I'm really excited for, um, as someone who has two clubs who I'm involved with on campus, so I'm very excited for that. Um, and then we also have our homecoming dance upcoming as well at the end of September. Um, and then, um, Normanade is also, has a bunch of activities today. I believe they had, um, a wellness activity as well, um, but this day, they were giving out donuts if you follow them on Instagram. So, um, basically everyone on campus had a donut and it was a good way to get people, you know, um, especially freshmen, um, to let them know about Normanade. I think this is a creative way of getting them, um, to know about it, so, love donuts also. Um, and then this last, these past two weeks have also been, um, very heavy on leadership and ASB development and training. Um, so the first thing that I had the, had the opportunity to do, um, was attend the, um, CSBA's, uh, Student Board Member Training. And I learnt a lot from there. I spent three hours in this training, um, and learnt about not only the rules and responsibilities of the student board member, but of the Board of Education as a whole, um, from the CSBA itself, which is a big deal. Um, they also went over the Brown Act, which of course is an important part of being on the board. Um, and then probably one of my favorite parts of this training was that I got to spend about an hour of the time with other student board members. So we spent about an hour with maybe six or so other student board members and it was really interesting learning how different districts kind of use this position and how different student board members like approach their position and, um, and how they communicate with the student body and kind of bring that to the board. Um, and then something I just wanna say about that is I think I have a very, you know, large privilege as a student board member in BHUSD because so many of these other student board members, I was hearing, um, sometimes the ASB at the high school will make the president assume the position when they like, did not sign up for that. Or, um, the student board member will be representing six, seven high schools. Some of them, they don't even know exist. That's what one student said, like, I didn't even know this high school existed until I came on the board. So, um, I think the tight knit and small commu- community that we have has allowed me to, you know, be involved and like know everyone from around the district, so I'm very grateful for that. And then ASB also had a kind of training and development conference with involved schools this last Thursday. Um, so, um, basically we were pulled from our classes all day in a leadership conference slash workshop with involved schools. Um, and basically the purpose of this activity was to learn how to create engaging school activities and improve school spirit. So we learnt so many new activities, um, and ideas and ways to get students involved and actually excited about being involved in school. Um, and also just new ways to approach, um, participation and, you know, having greater participation. And then we also just learned new ways to develop our ASB as a whole from improving our social media presence, like having more pictures on our Instagrams as opposed to you just Canva posts and like graphics. So things that like get more engagement digitally. And then I think what everyone has been waiting for, the video. I think I have to sh- share my scr- my sound for this one. That's the video. And who? Don't move. That's it.
Alex, again, a very pleasant and a very nice presentation of what's going on. I particularly liked the involvement that you got with the, uh, the CSBA and going to that, uh, y- uh, commu- that project that they had, the, uh, meeting that they had for you, the conference. I think that, I think what you came away from that is finding out that I think our school district is kind of special in a certain way, that we, you have so much, I think, greater latitude as a student board member and the way you're handled and so on. And I think that I, I'm really glad that you went there because I really always look upon that as something that we really admire and respect, the student board member that comes to our board. And you've been doing such a great job and I wanna thank you again for that great presentation.
Uh, Alex, thank you for the report. And on the note of, um, the student board member and the training that you got, was there anything that other student board members around the street are doing some rights privileges, something they have that you don't have here that you heard, learned about? Like, is there any, is there any ask like of, or just idea of something that, you know, we could be doing differently as a board to, you know, set up things for the student board member to be successful?
I think honestly, we are probably one of the most advanced boards. There are a lot of boards that don't even have the student board member getting the preferential vote yet. So we've already taken that opportunity and I think that we're honestly ahead of the game, to be honest.
Awesome. Well, if there's, if there's anything else that we could be doing, I think I, I think I speak for all the board members to say when we, we, we really do wanna be on the forefront of that. And, uh, so, thank you for the report and feel free to keep pushing the envelope when and if you feel the need to.
Thank you, Alex. I especially liked the music video at the football game. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you for the report and for representing. Um, it's exciting. I, I thought about I couldn't make the game and I usually don't miss a game, but I had a hard time getting there and I thought, how are they all gonna do in that heat? And apparently they did okay. Snow cones, is that the secret? Okay, now we know. They didn't have ice cream sandwiches too. It seems to be a theme here. There's an ice cream truck somewhere that's very happy.
Uh, thank you, Alex. I love your videos so much. I think it's, they're so good and really fun to watch. I saw yours right after you made it, after being at the game and it really was, it was perfect. Um, I really appreciate you doing the student board member, um, uh, program with CSBA. Uh, I know when I did the Masters in Governance Program, I learned so much. I could almost do it again and pick up what I didn't re- know when I first did it. I did it right when I got on the board and I, and I would be interested to see my point of view now that I've been on the board for almost two years. So, um, I really encourage that. I encourage all our board members to do that. And, um, I just think there's always information to learn and you meet other, um, board members from different districts and you learn information from them as well. And I would say that for me, another goal for us as a board to expand ourselves outside of our own district. Um, so thank you very much for that.
Also, I wanna say thank you for your report. And one of the things I enjoy most, uh, about you, Alex, is this willingness to learn. Uh, 'cause it's a really big position and, um, you just didn't come on, um, you know, with, with this, um, feeling that you knew it all. Um, and so, um, we have a lot of people that, a lot of student board members that, that don't make the time for the training and the training part is really important. Um, and as you mentioned, um, you know, we're fortunate to be a little further ahead when it comes to working with our student board members. Um, Mr. Margot and I attended a, a meeting last Monday for the, um, it's the LA County School Trustees Association, so the LAKSTA. Um, and there was just a number of people at that meeting that kept reporting over and over, please help us, please help us. We don't even have a student. Please help us. We don't even have a Student Board Member." And so, we heard that over and over and over. So that was really reassuring for us as well. So thank you for your report, and thank you for that willingness to learn, because it's a big job. And I just, just the door's gonna be open for you to just learn so much more in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy.
Right, and I would say Eli is the one that brought that preferential vote to the Board. And so, it was, you know, another thing that he learned about and he brought, brought to the Board and as well from making a motion as well. So I think that as you learn those things, don't be shy about bringing them to the Board.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I had a preferential vote twenty years ago.
You did?
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I, I mean, really, one of the things I wanted to highlight for Alex is, I, I think you know this, but the, the, the right to try to agendize things the same way that, you know, any other Board Member can, making motions in seconds. Like, that's how we got the Football Lights approved. It actually came from the students, right? Me as a Student Board Member bringing it, so. Oh yeah, absolutely. So, so I guess we didn't have it for a while.
Did we not have it before you?
So, no, we did. It just, it, it, there oftentimes, it wouldn't be announced as a preferential, but, or, but the Student Board Member has had the preferential vote. It's depending on the President, sometimes it's, it's mentioned, sometimes it's not. But lately, it, it certainly has been brought up.
Yeah, when I was President, the, the vote was made, but it wasn't necessarily spoken separate.
Correct.
Are recorded.
Yeah. No, it was recorded.
It was recorded. Ms. Krausar would record.
Yeah, she would always record it. It was just wasn't singled out, like.
Right.
One quick comment, I believe that Eli brought up when he was sitting in the Student Board Position. At the end of the year, he made some comment about the fact that there is a thing in the Senate or the state representatives about changing the vote to being a full vote. And that was, I don't know what's happened to that yet. Maybe you found out at the LACSA the other night, but I believe there's in a, something coming down the wire from the state legislation about changing that position to being a full vote.
No, there was nothing reported, and I'll do my report in a second from the LACSA. But there was nothing reported on last Monday about that.
On that point, I will have Rochelle start with Board Reports for any meetings that you've attended since her last Board Meeting.
Well, let's see. I went to a, um, the Finance Committee, that's a meeting, uh, Mr. Rafael, the forty day interim reporter for the class. And it was well received, and the board was ready to go before, because we are financially, so that was well received. I also, I also attended the CBOC meeting that was held both, I believe, virtually and in person. They introduced the new member that we have coming. I believe that's gonna be coming up in a few minutes on the agenda. They talked about visiting the Board Meetings, coming to the Board Meetings, or having them be in attendance so that they know what's going on. And they talked about going on some construction site visitations soon to see. I believe they're setting one up for El Rodeo in the very near future. They talked about having some studying sessions with Moss Adams to go over the reports and have them, so they understand them more and can be more in tune with what they're doing with them and so on. They talked about the fact that there's a, a grant from the State Department, State of California for workshops to study the grants and so on, so they can learn more about those. And they also then talked about maybe meeting only six times or maybe five times a year so as that the meetings would be more important in terms of the amount of material that's necessary and that they may not need to meet every single month. So they were talking about cutting back the amount of meetings that they're gonna have during the coming year. And I gotta say that it was one of the, it was really a very good meeting. And we have a new Chair of the Committee who happens to be here tonight, Mr. Les Pronte. I mean, yeah, Les Pronte, there he is. And it was really a very good meeting, probably, and I'd like to thank him for being the new Chair of the Committee, so.
Thank you.
Well, the first meeting of BHGF of the year has, according to the President, has been pushed back to September nineteenth, so there haven't been any meetings there yet. But I was at least able to help facilitate some work between the BHAAA and BHGF about some naming rights, which I won't say, because hopefully that'll be announced through BHGF or BHAAA soon. But hopefully, there's something good coming, coming out of that. And I think that's it.
As I've said, the HRC has been silent over August, and they will resume this month. So then I will be reporting on Human Relations Committee, Commission.
I attended the LACSA meeting via Zoom last Monday. I was scheduled to attend in person, but then I had a second Zoom meeting scheduled concurrently, so I had to jump from one Zoom to the other. Thank you for technology saving me a lot of gas. But the meeting was out in La Puente at a center out there, and it was, the dinner was catered by the High School Student Culinary Program out there. Seemed to be pretty good looking food that I missed out on. Regret that. But Tony Thurman, the Superintendent of Instruction in California, spoke. He was the key speaker. He had noted that being a School Board Member is the hardest elected position in basically the world, but we'll say the country. And he started his career on City Council first and then moved to School Board, which I did not know that. When he did get, first get on his School Board, he was, the first meeting, he was asked to vote on closing ten schools in his district. And he said that they told him, "We're gonna ask you to do things that are bad for kids, but you have to do them anyway." And that was kind of an eye opener for her about, for him in public education. On the good front is he wants to continue trying to make sure that the CD does not impose unfunded mandates upon public schools anymore. He's pledging to get ten thousand mental health counselors in the next few years through an expedited program. He wants to put aside two hundred and fifty million for literacy programs in California. And of course, he, he bragged about full funding for Universal TK and Universal Meals, of which I said, "What full funding for Universal TK?" So, and then, the Student Board Member from Bellflower Unified spoke. He was the other key speaker. And he actually did an amazing job talking about how to get students engaged in government, both, both local school government and local city government. That students really need to do a better job stepping up, and a lot of that could be done through some history classes and to try to inspire kids to get involved, being responsible, participating. He said, "There's disillusionment and distrust. When those exist in the districts, it interrupts a good flow of communication to the students." Right from a student standpoint. And I thought that was interesting, because it remembers coming, things come back to the Board, and we have to, we have to present a much stronger front and, and where we don't have disillusionment and distrust, that could interrupt communication. He, he asked questions how students can be heard and be involved, and we hear that a lot with your presence and your reports. And past Board Members did bring a lot of student concerns to our, to our Board. And Student Board Members need to kind of be that linchpin between the politics that are going on here and the students, and provide that clear line of communication. Then they did a breakout session and put us all into groups to discuss issues, major issues plaguing Los Angeles County schools. This, I thought, was the most fascinating, because as much as we in Beverly Hills think that we're a little bit unique and we're a little bit different, we're not as unique and different as we'd like to think. I, I spoke, I, I was in a group with people from Glendale and Azusa, and they talked about, Glendale specifically has issues with their construction funding. Everybody complained about learning loss. Everybody complained about teacher shortage and retention. Everybody claimed about dropping declining enrollment. It is, it is a plague all over. So when we discuss these issues as a district, we need to be cognizant of the fact that this is not a problem we are fighting alone. And that we could think about using each other, and I say each other as other districts and the county, as resources in helping combat what ails us. Examples that were given, in Azusa, from the nineteen eighties, they had twenty thousand students. They have seven thousand students right now. So that's, that's a huge drop. They are an ADA school, so it really hurts them. They have closed seven schools over that course of time. So, and, and other school districts, I know it's, somebody from William S. Hart spoke, I'll close on this, and they are actually providing housing for staff to fight the retention issue for staff. So there's, there's just, it's, it's important for us to, to have this connection to our other schools in the county. We are not alone. Thank you.
Noah, can I ask, did they give you rationale for saying those declines in the student population?
Yes, they did. I have that here. Funny you should ask. Thank you. I didn't plant that question, by the way. First and foremost was birth rate. Declining birth rate. More people are homeschooling, especially as internet technology becomes better. People are using school of choice where they can. Cost of living drives people out of district. Sound familiar, everyone? So that's, that's, and that's not us. That's the other districts that I spoke to, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Noah. I, I mean, I just read an article statewide that that's, that is the number one plague for declining enrollment for all school districts. However, I would say, and I mean, my hat's off to Dr. Bregy and his administration, because I saw our enrollment and from last year to this year, and we are, it looks like leveled out this year. And understood that we did grandparent permits and we increased our TK. But I think we've also heard of many families that have come back or moved from other schools to come into our district. So unlike the rest right now, we actually are leveled. And that's really astounding, because all we've talked about is declining enrollment, and the forces are against us, but we actually leveled out this year. And I think that's, that's a huge testament to, to you and your Cabinet for, for moving quickly and making that happen and bringing those policies to us as a Board. So I wanna thank you for that.
And we have to feel very lucky or blessed, I would even say, that we're A, we're basic aid. Community funded, excuse me, sorry. Look, Rafael's looking at me right now. Because all of these other schools are really suffering being ADA.
Right. I mean, I looked, we are down from the year prior, before COVID, but we did not go down this year. And I think that's, that's, it says a lot, and I, I think it's fantastic. And I, I'm sure we're, we are, it's not very common at all. And I do, I've heard from many parents that have left their private schools to come to our district. So I think it's all, it's always good to hear the other side. I think the other thing that I heard in the, the parent, the PTA President Meeting was also a, a lot of good feedback that the PTA's been hearing from teachers. And I've seen the support coming from the teachers to support PTA. And as well, I've heard that they've, that the PTA in general has had really great engagement right out the gate. So they've had a lot of people that are participating and donating and signing up for PTA. And I think that's a good sign of being on the right path. In terms of meetings, I, I attended the Finance Committee Meeting. I'm not gonna repeat that. And, and the parent, I mean, the, the President's Association, the parent President's PTA Meeting. And we also had another audit check-in with Moss Adams and Pro West, and that continues. That's it. And next up is the Approval of Agreement for Employment Executive Director of Construction Services.
Hi, thank you, President Wells. Board Members, what you have in front of you for your consideration is the Employment Agreement for the Executive Director Construction Services position. We're excited to bring this position. You talked about some restructuring with our construction program. And we see this is a, a key position that will hopefully join our district. This gentleman went through, we cast a wide net, and as you know, we went through multiple rounds of interviews, including with Board Members, Superintendent, and Cabinet Members. So we're really excited to bring this contract before you tonight.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the Agreement for the Employment of the Executive Director of Construction Services.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Halimi. Any comments?
I'll just say that it was a pleasure to meet William Carrot today. I'm sorry, how do we pronounce his last name?
I think it's Karat.
Karat, excuse me, Karat. It was a pleasure to meet him. And I think this is like the, the, the final structural piece to a reconstructed kind of construction program in the way that the, you know, Board is going to be managing it going forward. And so, this has been a lot of work, and now the work goes into the process, right? Like, we're, but we're getting all the pieces in place, and I think this is the last piece, and I'm, I'm pretty thrilled about that. Thanks.
Did you have anything? Okay. Mr. Karat, wonderful gentleman, very skilled, seems to be very experienced. That being said, I'm not gonna be supporting this tonight, not because of the person we're hiring, but because of the position. You know, if, they say if we don't study history, we're doomed to repeat it. We have been here before, where we're about to be. I lived through it. It didn't work. I don't think that we have restructured the background correctly, that this position will succeed. That's how I feel. I feel that bringing on the new management team and having them, just barely having their feet wet right now, and then bringing in an Executive Director, there's gonna be, I foresee a duplication of effort. I foresee communication lines being crossed. And I don't, and I, like I said, we had this structure before, and it didn't work for us. So I'm very hesitant on this at the moment, until we get our ducks in a row, to know how all these players are gonna help us succeed. Because I think we're throwing a bunch of people in this pool and saying, "Make it work", as opposed to making sure that we have the system in place to make it successful for these people. Thank you.
I think it's a shame that you're not gonna vote for this, but I will say this. Even though the structural process may have been the same, there's strategy, there's structure, there's process, and there's people. Just because you had one of those pieces the same does not mean that history is gonna repeat itself. And I will also say that the way we had the structure before didn't work either. So we are where we are. I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with this. I think we're putting the right strategy in place. We have a great strategic plan. We're putting real metrics and accountability in place, which will include this. I think we're putting the right structure in place, the right people, and we're looking forward. So I'm, I'm excited that we're making progress here.
I would just like to say, I think the structure is actually somewhat different. This is a Cabinet position where Mr. Carrot, Karat, will be reporting to Rafael and reporting into Dr. Bregy. I don't think that we had the exact same structure in terms of how that position was included with Dr. Bregy's Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent and his close Cabinet where they'll be collaborating. I think that we looked at this structure to provide greater transparency and accountability, to streamline the reporting structure so that there's better communication, both within our district and outside of our district. And I feel really confident that this is the piece that we need to provide that accountability. Mr. Karat comes with a lot of experience. He's overseen over a hundred construction projects, most of them all with schools. And I think that having him focusing on that while we have Ken Haas focusing on our maintenance and operations, which we know is a big job, that Ken Haas is right now just getting us, trying to get right the ship in our maintenance and operations. That having someone that can really focus and represent the district truly and our interests and having that accountability is really important, and really excited that he's joining us. I think that in addition to that, we first went out for interviews and we were not satisfied. So then we, we went out again and advertised for the position, and that's when we came back with this next round of candidates. We included the city, the position of one of the city employees who's very similar to this position, but that works for the city in their Public Works Department, and included her in reviewing the applications and had their input as well. And I feel really confident with the structure that we have. It's, to Gabe's point, it's about the people now that execute this and, and having that strategy behind it.
I just wanna make one little comment here, and that is that all of us on the Board, except for Noah, did not. did not work under such a, a uh, district program or such a district uh, organization. So we have no uh, knowledge of things that happened in the past. And I think that is important to bring up to this point also, Noah. I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I think that I have no knowledge of what happened in the past. I only know that I've been missing what Mary just said, what Mrs. Wells just said about being, the lot of transparency and collaboration and so on. And I haven't had that during the four, almost four years that I was on the board. So I'm, I think that that's what the piece was that I was missing and I didn't have it during those four years at all, basically. And now I do, I, I think I should have with, with a little bit of time left that uh, going forward. So that's the only thing is you knew from the past that something didn't work. I did not.
Yeah, and I respect what you're saying, Mrs. Marcus, because there, there were inherent issues with the last four years as well. But from my, from, just from my perch, going back to the way it was before that isn't the solution. Finding a different system to put in place that may work might be a better solution, different from both things that we've had in the past that didn't work. So that's, that's my real hesitation. And once again, and Gabe, I respect what you said as well. But, but once again, nothing against the candidate here for this position at all. I just, I'd want to set somebody up to succeed and I don't like throwing money at people to solve a problem. And that's sometimes what I feel we tend to do in this district. That's why I know that, that Dustin knows this and Rafael, you'll learn this. But when people say, we need to hire a blank and blank, I'm like, do we though? Or do we just need to look at the problem and solve the problem? That's where my hesitation comes in. And in this case, this particular case, I think we need to look a little bit more at the whole, at the whole picture before just throwing a contract at somebody and saying, hopefully you'll make it better.
Right.
That's, that's where I'm coming from. But thank you guys for entertaining this.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, Noah. I think what is different from my understanding is that we are actually taking this position and uh, defining this position and empowering the person in this position to be effective. And I don't know that um, previously when you had that position filled, that that was the same scenario as how we're approaching this.
It was supposed to be.
It was supposed to be, but it wasn't. So I think this is what's different is we've very clearly defined what the expectations are going to be.
There are, there are undoubtedly some parallels between the, the new CM's responsibilities and this person's responsibilities. And that's where I'm concerned that wires might get crossed and, and we may run into conflict. Maybe we won't and maybe it'll all work out great and I really, really hope that it does. But I just, for me, I would like to put a pause on all this and say, let's really take a look at what we need from all of these different vendors slash contracted administrators before we just put it into place without understanding what has gone wrong.
For the, for the community that's, that's following this, I just want to highlight something. The previous structure that we had, had a bond manager that was reporting directly to the board of education.
That's not the structure I'm referring to.
No, no, but, but, but that was the structure that this board, when I came on it, inherited. And I think what, what I saw before I came onto the board and certainly once I came on the board and spent time with our bond manager was that structure certainly did not work. So in, in my mind, what we needed to implement was to give our administration, to give Dr. Bregy and his team the ability to actually monitor, supervise and uh, help direct the direction of our construction program, which was something that the board, that, that the cabinet did not have in the previous structure. So I think what we have done here is we, we had to restructure because the previous structure we inherited was not, was not working. I think the people within that structure were not working and we certainly did not have a winning process. I think we have, we're, we're at least trying to correct all three of those and I'm confident with the path that we have set forward. I think it is a net benefit to say the least to have your experience on this board. Let me be very clear. Because you've been here for, to 10 years and can, and can point out where the pitfalls are. And I hope that if we move this forward tonight, as I expect that we will, I hope we can count on you to help make sure that we don't fall into the previous pitfalls that, that, that previous boards maybe have fallen into.
Duly noted.
I, I, I just really hope we're looking forward and that we're all lockstep in making sure that coming out of this, if we do approve this tonight, uh, and we get William in his, in his position, that we set him up for success going forward. Thanks.
Does anyone else have any other comments? Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all those opposed? The motion passes four to one uh, with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Thank you. May I have a motion for, actually, we are business and finance, so we are going to have.
You want the presentation first and then the motion?
Yes. So um, Rafael?
Okay, so um, thank you again, President Wells and our, and our board. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today our unaudited actials. Thank you, Dr. Bregy and our cabinet, as well, as well as our public here today and those listening at home. I just want to start off by thanking our district cabinet and fiscal team, of course, uh, starting with Dr. Bregy for giving us the, the time and opportunity to get this done. He uh, he took on some things that, you know, I probably should have done. I appreciate that. Uh, he's always like that, so a great leader and I, and I'm thankful to work for him. And um, and so we were able to get this done. And as well as our cabinet for all of your collaboration. And a special uh, shout out to um, our director of fiscal services, Ms. Angela Livia Flore, who, who really put a lot of this uh, together for us. She's doing an amazing job as well as the team down uh, in, in business services and fiscal services, like uh, Maricela Salinas, Ms. Denise Weatherspoon, uh, and the rest, of course, our payroll team and, and everyone else. This is a big joint effort. And I thank everyone in our team for all of the hard work that they've done, as well as our cabinet members here today. So going on to the budget and financial reporting cycle. So as you can see here on the screen, um, this is a cyclical cycle. We're always doing something in the business office. And currently, uh, as you can see, we're in September and we're at the unaudited actials. And so we'll talk about what that is. And as you can see, as we get towards December, we'll look at the first interim report and then the governor will come out with his budget proposal. And then we'll have the second interim and so forth and so forth. So this is just, it just keeps going. You're constantly seeing these reports and that's a good thing because we're constantly looking at our data and making sure that our assumptions are, are uh, good assumptions. So what are the unaudited actials? In compliance with the ED code, the Los Angeles County Office of Education requests that districts file their board-approved unaudited actials by September 15th. So this is something that we have to do every year by September 15th. So we're on time this year. And that's good. And we've always been on time, so that's, that's good. And the unaudited actials is basically a report of the district's actual financial transactions. These are no longer projections. This is where we're actually ending the year. So at first interim, we're giving you projections. Second interim, we're giving you projections again. And then the unaudited actials is, this is where we have ended the year. Now, what happens after this is our auditor comes in, looks at our unaudited actials and says, yes, you're right. Or hey, you need to make some adjustments here and there. And then they become our audited actials. That's why they're called unaudited because the auditor still has to come in and audit the unaudited actials. And so this report, along with backup and supporting documents, is reviewed during the district's annual independent audit. And again, this is just looking at our beginning balances in each one of our funds, not only our general fund, but also cafeteria fund, every other, our special reserve fund, our bond fund, every, all the funds are looked at. We look at actual revenues, receivables, expenses and payables to get the ending fund balances for the fiscal year. So looking at some trends here, as you know, and uh, Mr. Margot alluded to this a little bit earlier. We're a community-funded district. And so what that means is basically the majority of our funds come from property taxes. Whereas a regular district, uh, that's, the majority of their funds come from state aid and a mix of property taxes and EPA. But as you can see here on this chart, the majority of the funds here for uh, Beverly Hills Unified really come from the uh, property taxes. So the, it's a community-funded uh, district. So as we look at the differences, uh, the factors that drive uh, the property, a community-funded district is that the changes in ADA don't greatly affect our unrestricted revenues because they're basically more so based on property taxes. And this increase or decrease, i- it, it leads to an increase or a decrease in our unrestricted income. And our ADA increases result in uh, lower per pupil revenues and um, for total revenues, property taxes matter. ADA doesn't matter as much. Uh, so major changes in LCFF funding intended to, intended to address new programs are not received. I put that in there because uh, so recently you've, you've seen the increase for TK. And the governor increased the funding and everything like that. Uh, Beverly Hills is not seeing an increase in funding uh, as other districts are. So that's something that uh, I know at different levels, many community-funded districts are looking at, trying to find a way to get funding for that because right now it's allocated towards LCFF. So the district is not getting funding for these mandates of TK. So that's something that we're, we're going to have to look at closely. But as you can see here, this is a graph of our property tax revenue and it's been growing. Uh, if you look back at 1718, it was about 47.7 million. And in 2122, we're looking at ending at 60, roughly about $60 million in property tax revenue. So you could see there is some growth in property taxes. And as we look at enrollment, uh, as President Wells alluded to earlier, it looks pretty stable. It's, it was at 3160 last year in fiscal year 2122 and it's at about 3,140 students this year. Now, this isn't our final enrollment number. This is an estimate. So those, that number can fluctuate from here to first interim. Uh, so that's something that we're going to keep in mind. So it, it does look like it's pretty leveled a- at this point in time. And uh, as you can see here, the, the general fund salaries also continue to grow. Back in 1718, they were about 40.5 million. This is just the salary portion. It does not include benefits. So about 40.5 million and at this point in 2122, it's grown to 47.6 million in general fund salaries. And general fund expenditures per student. Um, and I, what I tried to do here, I tried to like add some of the uh, different colors from the different schools. Rebecca's probably looking at me like, nope, that's the wrong color. I could see it. So uh, I ran out of time. I was actually at, you know, going to ask her, what's the number for that color?
She's editing it as you're speaking.
Yes, yes. But um, yeah.
You'll get a tattoo.
We could see that the general fund expenditures is growing. So in 2021, it was 23,000. Um, and now it's about 27,000. 26,955 is what we have as far as general fund expenditures per student. So just a cautionary thing here is this is probably a little inflated because of all the revenues that were received for federal revenues. So just keep that in mind. Don't be surprised that as those revenues dwindle, that probably will come down. Uh, so it's something to really look at as we move forward, unless property taxes continue to rise or, or we receive other sources of revenue. So as we look at general fund, we could see that in this current year, for 20, I'm sorry, for the 2122 fiscal year, the beginning fund ba- balance was about 17.6 million and the revenues that came in, about $60 million for property tax, about 2.4 million for state aid and all other state revenue was about 7.7 million. Our federal revenues was about 6.4, local revenue about 15.3, for a total general fund revenue balance of $92 million roughly. And that was about a $5.1 million increase from the previous year. When we look at the expenditures, the salaries went up and it was 47.6 million. Benefits also went up to about 20.1 million. Supplies uh, went up as well, about 3.6 million. And services also went up pretty substantially to 13.7 million. You got to keep in mind, a lot of this is federal revenues that are having to be expended in those fiscal years by, by the time limitations that we have. One thing to note here that uh, I'm sure you all be hap- will be happy about, there was a deferred maintenance contribution again. And thank you for the board for that because that's, it used to be where the state was giving this uh, deferred maintenance contribution. And a really long time ago, it stopped. And so now districts have to opt into doing that on their own from general fund revenues. And I'm happy to report that we were able to do that this year. Uh, but something that's missing here is a transfer for uh, food services. So the FS there in last fiscal year was about 153,000 was the transfer. This year, it's zero. So a lot of that has to do with the fact that uh, now we're getting more revenues for uh, for cafeteria funds. So that is pretty much eliminated in 2122. So that's great news. And we do, we see that that probably will continue, that trend will continue there. So that's really great news for the district. Now, the total expenses, uh, when we calculate all this together is about 86.6 million for an operational impact of an increase uh, of about 5.4. There was an audit adjustment last year of about 2.1 million dollars, which means that our ending fund balance, uh, you know, as of June 30th, in the unaudited actials, is 23.0 uh, million dollars. So 23 million dollars, which is a growth of about 3.2 million from the ending fund balance of our previous year. So that's where we are in regards to our ending fund balance. Now, this chart here shows you the ending balance and reserves. So as you know, we also have a Fund 17. Um, and we'll be looking at that fund here in the next few slides. But basically you can see here that in 2122, our total general fund, ending fund balance is about 23.0 million, right? 23.1 million roughly. So the reason why we separate out the orange from the green is because some of these funds that are in the reserve or the ending fund balance are actually restricted reserves. So we can't tap into those funds, uh, you know, for any purpose. They're restricted uh, for specific purposes, right? Now, that's some of those funds. So the green represents the unrestricted side. Uh, and the purple there, and again, sorry for the, the wrong color used, but the, the purple there uh, represents the summation of Fund 17 plus the reserve that's unrestricted. So that's that 30.4 million dollars there, or roughly actually 30.5 million roughly. So that's where we ended in our ending fund balance. So you could see that the percentage, when we include Fund 17, it's grown to about 35% reserve levels. Now, I just want to make a, a comment here about the reserves. We have to keep in mind that a lot of these, a lot of this growth ha- happens to coincide with, with the receipt of federal funds. As you can see, it went from 27% all the way up to 35% in a matter of about two years. And, and that happened really because some of the expenses that perhaps in other times would have been used out of general fund. Uh, you know, we, we used some funds and where it, it helped to have those federal reserve, uh, federal dollars given to the district. Uh, so that definitely helped eh, the district as far as reserves go. So it's just important to keep that in mind because once those funds go away, then we'll really see a true picture of, of where they, where we are financially. So talking about COVID funds, um, here's a really brief update. We'll be giving some more in-depth details about COVID funds in a future presentation, but this is where we ended the year as of June 30th. So I know it's small there on the screen, but if you, if you, you're following it at home or if you see it on, on your screen there, you could see that we had quite a bit of different little pots of money. Um, it was less even last year, but then they expanded it even more so. So now we have a lot of little pots. So as you can see, our ESER 1 dollars, which is the first column there, we're fully expended. So there's no remaining uh, resources available there. ESER 2, we still have about 500,000 available for ESER 2. And that doesn't expire till September 30th of next year. So we're, we're going to be well in range to expend those funds. ESER 3 dollars, um, those don't expire till September 30th of 2024 and there's about $92,000 left there. And on the other ESER 3, there's about $730,000 left there. Now, there's just different um, ways that you can use those ESER 3 funds. So that's why they're separated out. And then we have gear funds. Those were also due by September 30th. They're fully expended. The ESER 2 ELO funds, we have about $340,000 there and those expire next year in September. So we're, we're in range to spend those. And as you can see here, gear 2 funds, about 78,000. ESER 3 uh, emergency need funds, about 222,000. Those expire in uh, 2024. And as we keep going there, we have the state reserve ESER 3, that's about 383,000. And then we've expended the uh, COVID relief funds, the CDC LACO testing grant funds and the SB 117. Those funds were also expended. Um, and as we keep going, you'll, you'll see that these were broken out even further. So um, and, and the COVID Prop 98 funds, those are fully expended. The learning loss mitigation funds, there's about 17,000 left there. Uh, in the expanded learning, about 50,000 left there. In the paraprofessional uh, learning loss mitigation funds, there's no uh, more funds remaining there. So uh, we have that total there remaining of about 2.4 million. And as you can see here, uh, some of that affected our adopted budget, but for the most part, those funds have been budgeted and are, are on track to be expended on time. So that's, that's really good. Now, how does, how do our other funds look? So Fund 8, as you, if you recall, last year around this time, Wade presented that this, for the first time, um, ASB funds had to be included in the district. that this, for the first time, ASB funds had to be included in the district funds. So, that, it wasn't a one-year thing, it continues. So, we started at about two hundred thousand dollars and ended at about four hundred thousand. So, that fund balance grew there. On Fund Thirteen, it's, you can see that we started at about four hundred and fifty thousand. And that fund balance actually ended at nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Now, here's a nice graph that shows you the general fund contribution for food services. And as you can see, back in sixteen seventeen, which is just a few years ago, the contribution was about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, it's zero. So, that's really good news because it helps, you know, use those funds for other programs. So, that's really good. Fund Fourteen, our deferred maintenance fund, as you can see, started the year with about five hundred, close to six hundred thousand dollars, spent about eight hundred thousand. And the general fund contributed about one point fours for an ending fund balance of one point two million. Our Fund Seventeen, the reserve fund, it went from ten point eight to ten point nine million dollars. That increase was pretty much the interest that was captured there. Fund Twenty-One, you could see that the beginning balance was about a hundred and twenty-two million. There was a large issuance that was given in twenty-one twenty-two, I don't know if you recall last year. There was an issuance of about two hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Thus far, in twenty-one twenty-two, there was eighty-six point nine million expended for an ending fund balance of two hundred and sixty point seven million dollars in the bond fund. And Fund Twenty-Five, as you can see, three point five million dollars is where it began. And we ended at about two point one million. That's your developer fee funds. Fund Thirty-Five, the school facilities, that's, as Wade mentioned last year, that a whopping eighteen thousand dollars. And that remains the same. It only grew by about a whopping hundred and four dollars in interest. So, hey, something is something, right? So, that's your Fund Thirty-Five. Fund Fifty-One, this is actually managed by the county treasurer. There's not really much we do with this fund, we can't even really touch it. So, it's kind of a mechanism of how bonds are paid. Fund Sixty-Seven, our self-insurance fund, started at about three hundred and fifty-four thousand and ended at about five hundred and nineteen thousand. So, that's, you can see the self-insurance fund there for the items where we're self-insured. OPEB fund went from five point three to about five point four million. And in summary, twenty-one twenty-two, again, operation was not reflective of a normal fiscal year. There was still a lot of things going on in twenty-one twenty-two, especially with the receipt of all these federal dollars. So, enrollment declines at BHUSD are reflective of overall student age, population declines in LA County. So, we did see a very slight decline. But every, for the most part, most districts in California are seeing enrollment declines. ESER funds are expiring, which could lead to less per pupil expenditure ratios and lower reserve levels. This is really important for us to understand. As these ESER dollars go away, we're going to have to make decisions on what to do with those expenses going forward. And then from there, how we maintain a certain reserve level. And although reserves have increased, the board may allocate these funds for state mandated expansion of TK because unfortunately, there's no relief for community-funded district. So, BHUSD might do that because we're not getting that additional funding. So, that's something to think about. And next steps. So, the board approves the unaudited actials report hopefully tonight. And we will send that over to LACO in time so that they could post the entries. And auditors will review and test the unaudited actials to make sure that it makes sense and that we have the numbers correct. If there's any adjustments, we'll make sure to present that to the board along with the audit report in December. And in late October, we will be presenting a draft version of our interim report, which will include any budget adjustments, staffing updates, and any carryover balances from twenty-two twenty-three. So, sorry for the long presentation, but that is about it. So, any questions? I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Alex?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for the very comprehensive report.
Do you want me to make a motion to approve the thing first before we go on with discussion? Okay, I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two unaudited actials.
I'll second.
I just wanna thank you for that very clear and concise report, Rafael. It was really quite, very clear and I really appreciate it. And I've been following it and I did quite a bit of looking at it at home. My question is, how are these ESER funds that are still left targeted? Or how are they being kept? Or how can we use them in the terms of the budget itself? What are the limitations of some of them? Salaries, benefits, are there anything in those that prevent or preclude doing them at this time? And even though they're not maybe due for another year or so?
Thank you, Ms. Marcus, that's a great question. Yes, there's a lot of different restrictions. You know, one of the things that the governor promised, the previous governor, to Governor Newsom, Governor Brown, when he introduced the LCFF was the elimination of categorical programs. I don't know if you recall, that was the big idea behind LCFF was no more categoricals. Well, as you can see now in the spreadsheet that we showed for all those different resources, pretty much are like categorical funds all over again. So, and it's not going away. There's other funds that we can potentially tap into in the future or that are being talked about, which will be very specific, which is what you're talking about, is they have specific restricted expenses. So, unfortunately, it looks like we're shifting towards categoricals again. And as we do that, we have to make sure that they fall in line with the proper expenses so we make sure that we don't have to pay any funds back. So, to answer your question, yes, there are different restrictions in the different categories that we're following closely. And so, here very soon, we'll be presenting another report of what we're doing with the remaining COVID funds and what we're doing with the remaining categoricals and any carryovers. So, you can see that how we're spending it. And our job is to make sure that they're expended correctly and that they don't, you know, get spent incorrectly so that we have to at some point pay those back. So, we don't wanna do that. So, that's what we will be doing.
Another thing that we can need to keep in mind, and I just recall from many years ago how much money the district had to transfer for the lunch programs. And as long as we are getting free lunches and we get that, and that, we don't know if that'll continue in longevity. I have no idea how long that, we have to keep that in mind that if that program ever stops, we may have to start to fund that also. So, that's something to consider.
So, the good news with that is that it does seem that the governor has, Governor Newsom has all the intentions of that program being continued in perpetuity. That's his goal and it's pretty much part of his budget. So, that's great news for us.
That's good news then.
Now, the contribution, hopefully we don't have to make one. There may be some years where you have some very large refreshes or something happens where you might have to buy large amounts of equipment. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. But even for that, the governor is giving some funds. Like he recently gave what are called kit funds or kitchen infrastructure and training funds that the district received. And so, hopefully that continues so that we could replenish those large refrigerators or things like that. But you may have some years where you'll have to do a contribution when you have to purchase or renew some of the things that you need for food services. But at this point, it looks like going forward, you most likely will not need to make a contribution any longer.
Okay, thank you again for that very comprehensive report. Sure.
Yeah, Rafael, thank you for the detailed report. Clearly, we haven't, you know, missed a beat under your leadership. It was very thorough and I appreciate it. I just wanted to highlight the twenty thousand dollars per student that we're spending. I think that's, I mean, it's pretty great, I believe. Just curious, if we were not a community-funded district and we're ADA, do you have any idea like what that would look like? I'm sorry, I should have submitted that upfront. But roughly, what is ADA per year, per student? Do you know off the cuff?
So, I did look into that because I kinda wanted to show you all a comparison about that. Unfortunately, the state hasn't released the number specifically. Typically, we get like a number. I haven't seen that number. I actually called Wade and I'm like, hey Wade, have you heard anything? Have you seen anything? And no, he hadn't either. And so, no, but from what I heard and what I saw in different presentations, it's roughly at about, close to about sixteen to seventeen thousand per student right now. With the increases that they just experienced, LCFF, it jumped to about that much. So, we're well ahead from other districts at this point in time.
That's great. And I just generally appreciate the kind of temperament, I think, in the report to remind us that, you know, this is not repeatable in terms of like the revenues that we're getting right now. So, let's spend the dollars, you know, wisely. And we gotta figure out other ways to maintain the reserve levels we wanna be at. Because I think we're meeting our reserve goal, right? I think we set a goal of thirty percent was the goal that we set. So, we're hitting the goal for this last year, which is great. But we got some help from the federal dollars along the way, so.
Thank you for that. And definitely, that goal that you have of that reserve level is great. One thing to keep in mind for a district like Beverly Hills is the whole cash flow situation. And that's why you want such a large reserve. Because cash is, could become a problem if your reserve level drops too much. And, you know, where other districts receive cash consistently through state aid, the district, we don't receive that as consistently as other districts. So, it's really important to have these large reserve levels in order to be able to meet our cash obligations month by month.
Yeah, thank you for reminding all of us of that. That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Nothing to add, thank you for the comprehensive report.
Thank you.
So, Rafael, on the COVID funding, the remaining balance that you have at two point four million, is that through twenty-three or twenty-four? Because is that on page, slide twenty-two, page twenty-two? So, that number at the bottom right, the two point four oh seven?
Yes.
Is that, that's it to spend through twenty-four, nine twenty-four?
Yes, through twenty-four.
Okay. So, I heard you say that you're gonna be looking at how those dollars will be spent. Are we as a board gonna be, well, let me rephrase that. I'd like nobody to be caught off guard when this money runs out. So, what I would like to see happen, if I get direction with my colleagues, is that we start kind of looking at dismantling everything and moving toward looking at the district without these funds. And say, what is it gonna look like without these funds? Because we're not exactly gonna know, we're gonna project our tax revenue. But assuming it basically levels off, watching what's happening with property right now. But is that something that we can do so come September twenty-four, we're not caught off guard?
That's absolutely a valid and very, very important observation. We do have to do that. And, you know, at First Centrum, we'll have more data to show you where we are with these COVID funds and kind of what it's funding, right? And so, that way, the board is given information to be able to make decisions. And of course, you know, under Dr. Bregge, you know, we will look at all these just to make sure that everything is in line and looking at the different budget resources available. But there's a lot of things going on, as you know, with the property taxes, we have to factor that in.
Yeah.
There's other areas as well that we have to look at, like JPA revenues, how that's going to look. And, you know, with all of that, at First Centrum, hopefully, we will have some clearer idea about some of these other areas and estimates so that we could kind of project out what will happen. Because this is, you're absolutely right, this is the right time to start looking at what is the future of the district without these federal revenues.
Right, because there's gonna be programs and staffing that are gonna have to be looked at. And it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that these were brought on because these dollars were available. And we have to make sure we get the most out of these dollars while we have them, but that at some point, we have to let it go.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
I agree. I think ideally, we've been looking at how do we put these dollars towards learning and improving our education, given that we've been in COVID and trying to put our dollars where we can really address what the ideal use was for the dollars and the allocation of the dollars in the first place. And I think that that's, you know, been our goal, is to really focus on that. And as we're looking at the strategic plan for this upcoming year is, how are we focusing on what our academic goals are? And how do we address, you know, our academic performance and educational experience for all those that need that? And who needs the extra support to catch up in the different ways that people have been affected from COVID? Be it from mental health and wellness to having air tutors, to having additional support and teachers in different areas and different groups and learning groups that need the extra support. So, I feel very grateful that we've had the COVID dollars that we've had and as well, the financial position that we are in as a district. I think we are so fortunate. And I did try and look as well at the cost per student, the spend per student. And I think it's even higher for this projected year. So, I think it's, we're in a very good place to perform well with all the resources that we have. It's about being smart about how we're spending it and evaluating as we go so that if we need to move dollars around and we're not getting the results that we were hoping for or it's not working, that we can make those adjustments even now so that we get the most out of our dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Thank you.
I'll make a motion for the approval of Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two-three dash zero zero three, the adoption of the GAN limit.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mr. Margot. Like to introduce that?
Oh, sure. So, let me just, so sorry about that. I had it up and it just shifted away from my screen here. Okay. So, essentially, the GAN limit is a, it's an automated calculation that we do when we do our unaudited actials. It looks at the GAN limit for the year. And if the district needs to adjust it, it allows the district to make that adjustment through formal action. It's an automated calculation, you can see the resolution there. It was basically as a result of Proposition Number Four that was done back in November of nineteen seventy-nine. And so, it's a long time ago. And for those of you that don't know about the GAN limit, basically, it's a limit to expand, to the amount of revenues that can be received. So, best way to explain it is think about if you have like a bucket. And in the bucket, you can only fit fifty million dollars, right? So, if you exceed fifty million dollars in the bucket, you have to take that money and give half of it to schools and the other half back to the taxpayers. That was the idea behind the GAN limit. And every year, it was adjusted for inflation, right? So, you had to kind of understand, right? It's adjusted for inflation and growth, population growth and all of that. So, what happens is, every year, we have to certify this GAN limit as a district, right? So that we can, and then the state, if we have any remaining GAN limit, the state takes that from us. Not in revenue, it's just the, like, the numbers, right? It doesn't take revenue. But it takes that so that they can offset their GAN limit and not return funds and do any of that stuff. So, it has to happen two consecutive years for the state, but it's something that every district has to do. And for us, we, it's an automated calculation that happens through our state accounting code structure software.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone have any questions about it? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Thank you so much. All right, our next item is approval of Resolution twenty-two twenty-three oh two, continuing authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to AB three-six-one. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Give it to Ms. Marcus.
The motion was made by myself and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Our next item is approval of new members to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the new member to our Citizen Bond Committee, which I believe is Jasmine Yadigari.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi, seconded by Dr. Stern. The CBOC had, has actually, I think, two openings. They, we interviewed one of the candidates last meeting. And the board did in our study session before we had our last board meeting.
Yep.
And voted to approve Jasmine Yadigari. And if anyone has, if there's no other questions, then I will call for the vote.
No, I just wanted to thank the Chair to Les Bronte and Nathan Kruger for being here and bringing forth the candidate. Thank you guys.
Yes. And I'm grateful for all those that interviewed or, well, put their application for the CBOC so important. And I encourage anybody else out there, I think we might have two more positions that need to be filled. Am I correct?
Just one.
Just one? All right. Okay.
Can I make a comment? I just made a mistake, I didn't make a mistake, I just made a slight omission. I just wanna also welcome Mr. Kruger, who is the vice chair of the committee, as I recall. And I said that Mr. Bronte was here, who was the chair, but Mr. Kruger is the vice chair, so.
Thank you. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Next on our agenda is board policies. We have four policies that are on the agenda. I'd like to invite Ms. Chisholm up, and she can introduce it. And then I'll make a motion to approve, I think, all four at the same time, unless you guys disagree.
And we want to waive the first reading, right?
Yes, and I thought I'd have her introduce it first, but and recommend that we waive the first reading and we'll call for the motion to approve.
All four together.
Yeah.
Yes, but first, I'm going to just let Laura introduce why we have this on. Thank you, Ms. Chisholm.
Good evening. It's not on. Okay. Good evening, board. I have, we have four policies on the agenda tonight. Policy five one four five seven, sexual harassment. Our UCP, our uniform complaint procedures and administrative regulation. Our policy on bullying. Those are the four that I'm asking the board to approve tonight. These are policies that are updated annually. We have not updated ours since around twenty eighteen. There are some significant changes. Want to make sure that we are in compliance. And these have the newest recommendations from CSBA.
We also have one that's new.
That's the administrative regulation for the uniform complaint process. Yes. Sorry, there are two under the UCP, the board policy and the administrative regulation, which is new. And that just talks about how we will administer that policy, and that's actually guidance from the state.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to say that this administration's done a lot of work on policies. I appreciate you bringing all of this forward. I mean, like, all the ones that we've reviewed. And I read these and just very grateful that we're ahead of the ball in this, or getting ahead of the ball again.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm just glad that we didn't get into any problems by not having them updated. They're supposed to be yearly, and we were able to catch up with here and go forward from here, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Agreed.
So I would like to call for a motion to waive the first reading and approve all five of these, the four board policies and administrative regulations. May I have a, I'll make a motion. Noah, Margot made a second. And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Thank you so much for bringing this to us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I'm really happy to see all of these updated in our board policies. Okay, the next item is board comment, general board comment, and I don't believe we have any. Okay, great. Then I'm going to move ahead to communication from board members. Alex Baden.
I just wanted to take this time to thank someone in the audience tonight, Mr. Siskin, who I think that the savant will come back. But Mr. Siskin was my teacher for two years, twice a day. And the fact that he's here tonight is very special to me. So thank you, Mr. Siskin, for being here.
Mrs. Marcus?
That it's been, make a comment about the presence of the members of some of the committees, the subcommittees that we have, the finance, the CBOC, and the fact that they're starting to try to attend the meetings and so that they can get the information firsthand what's going on. And I really want, I know that Bill Bymel was here for a while. I saw that he was here and he left. But the presence of, whoops, they're gone too, but they were here. And I really appreciate the, and I hope that more of them will come in the future to be present at the meetings because I think it's helpful for communication and for understanding of the program. And I just want to thank everybody that was very helpful tonight with the program as far as the strategic plan and going forward. And comment again how excited I am to see this really moving on again. Thank you.
Thanks for a great board meeting, everyone. I wanted to just highlight for the community that we have an election that's coming up for two seats on this board. So if you're, you know, interested, apply, get to know these candidates that are out there. I really hope that we'll continue to push forward, you know, all the great work that we're doing as a board and as a, as a school district. But just wanted to highlight for the community that that's going on, so to meet the candidates and get involved. And the last thing I'll say is I appreciate when we don't agree. And I appreciate when, you know, we can have differences of opinion, but I think we're all aligned that we really just want to move this school district forward with a lot of, you know, some of the issues that we've had, some opportunities. And I think even though sometimes we may disagree on exactly how to do it, I know we're aligned in our, our goals in doing that. And having some disagreement along the way only makes us stronger and the different experiences we have that we're bringing to the table. So I am appreciative of that. Thank you, guys.
I have really enjoyed working on some new spiritual concepts with the board, including the community pledge. And we've also revisited our values. And some of those values include well-being and inclusion. I mention those because I think it's very important that we, if you are around and you are, and you're available to do this or would care to donate, we had a student named Mason Duncan Book who passed away tragically, I think, two years ago from a childhood cancer. His parents have done an amazing job to try to raise money to improve the treatments for these children who are afflicted with this. And a year ago, I went to the run that was at Roxbury, and it was incredible. It was exhilarating. And it really touched on our values, which again, well-being, inclusion, and I'm sure a host of others. So if you are compelled to do so, please visit nottodaycancer.care. The N is dot care. I encourage you all to do that. Thank you.
Noah, excuse me, one minute. Before she makes that comment, I would, or you make a comment, can I ask that that possibly be posted on our websites or on our schools so we can inform the public about it in addition? Did I take it?
Oh.
Okay. Didn't I? Thank you.
And I believe it's in, the PTAs are also pushing that information out in there.
Many newsletters I've seen. Right. We also have JJ, JJ Duncan, who will be our community spotlight speaker at our next board meeting.
Oh, great.
For childhood cancer.
Fine, and from Kansas. Gabe, thank you for your comment. It's, you know, unfortunately, I'm steeped in all this history of everything, and I can't sometimes get out of, get out of that. But whether I agree or disagree with my colleagues on these kind of issues, I only want things to succeed out going forward. I don't, I do not wish, because there is no good ending for our students if this stuff doesn't succeed. So I will do whatever I need to do to make sure that it's successful from this point on. I feel that way about our inspectors, about our construction management team, about this position, Executive Director. I will be there. They can pick my brain. I've already spoken to Fonda Solari. So I do want everything to succeed in the face of that. So thank you for your comment. I want to thank also my colleagues for dealing with my crazy month of August. I just, for some reason, I know I haven't been here a lot in the month of August. It's been a month of insanity, and thank you for bearing with me. And I want to thank everybody in the community who came out last Thursday and joined us for the concert. And Dr. Bregge and President Wells and Rebecca was there. And I'm not sure if I'm leaving anybody out in this room, but a lot of staff did come to the concert and, yes.
Lots of staff.
Well, I didn't see everybody there. I saw you guys there. You know, I have, I have my green room. I had to hang out. The night was a blur, my friend. Anyway, I'm just, listen, I'm just trying to be, I'm just trying to be gracious. No, I think what it was is because President Wells took a really cool picture and sent it to me, and that was like the last image burnt in my head. And you were not in that particular picture, Dustin, so I'm sorry if I left you out. I'm sorry. My bad.
I'm certain I posted you, though.
As my daughter would say, I'm such a disappointment. I'm so sorry. Anyway, thank you.
I don't really have anything else to add except to welcome Will Karat. And I am very excited that we have put that last, filled that last position so that we can focus on moving forward. And so I just would like to formally welcome him, and we, you have our full support, so thank you.
Just quickly, two belated birthdays, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern.
That's right. Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Happy birthday. All right, if there is nothing else, I will officially adjourn the meeting. It is seven forty. Thank you all for being here. And Gabe, I think you'll make your dinner.
Dustin.